All right, we are interviewing with Mr. Ron Blevins Senior for Clark County Council. Hey, Mr. Blevins.
Hello, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing fine, thank you.
All right, we are going to get right into it. I'd like to start out by asking you, what are your best qualifications for the position? And what's your motivation for running?
Okay, well, I have thirty plus years of executive management, project management, establishing and managing budgets. You know, a lot of the things I did way back in the spring and in our first interview and all, but I've got PFMA Homeland Security Evaluation Training, Six Sigma Green Belt, Kazan, the Mike and Lean Operational Excellence. I've actually managed projects and things here domestically and overseas in different countries. And so, and I manage budgets, set up budgets, you know, different things in the manufacturing world.
Right.
And why I'm seeking this position, I wrote myself a note here just so, you know, I don't have no teleprompter. I'm seeking the office to bring positive change to the Clark County government. I feel that the citizens of Clark County have been taking advantage, you know, with, with all the taking the money, et cetera, and I am willing to stand up to those who misrepresent the best interests of Clark County taxpayers.
Thank you. If you could summarize in a nutshell, what do you hope to accomplish during your term if elected?
Well, I got, I don't know, six or eight items on the list that I would like to do. Obviously, it, you know, I, it can't be a one man show. You know, if I get in, but these, some of the things I'm really going to push and try to get support on. One is I'm going to promote lower property taxes. I'm going to do everything I can to help and talk to the right people. Just, you know, try to do the best I can. Fiscal conservatism, you know, we got to get responsible, you know, hold people responsible for our expenditures, take-ins and things. I want to, another thing with the EMS situation, I want to enhance our public safety. Work with the right people that, that's knowledgeable, you know, as I was saying, one, one manager told me one time in my learning days said, you don't have to know it all, you just have to know who does. And so, and I've, I've learned over the years to surround myself with people that, you know, that know and, and learn from and try to build, you know, achieve goals and set goals and achieve goals, whatever it is we're trying to accomplish. Restore transparency, integrity, honesty and accountability back in our local government. Support our local law enforcement. As you know, I recently obtained the FOP, the Clark County FOP, 181 Lodge, the endorsement, I'm proud of that. I got several endorsements from law enforcement, military, ex-military people. I want to support our local schools. Our education is very important and the schools need to have and the teachers need to have what they need in order to teach our kids and help them. Another thing, two more things here that I got just kind of noted down. One is the support to policies and things that promote smart economic growth. You know, that, that comes with our infrastructure and as well as bill, businesses coming in the communities. And the last one here I got, there's other things too, but this, this, just to name a few on this video. It's support our local small businesses. That's very important. Some of them really got hit hard when COVID came. And they're still struggling. And I was talking to a business owner the other day, really nice guy, and told me that there's days that he's in the hole, he's in the red. And he's having trouble supporting his business sometime. So, he's still keeping his employees and he's doing the best he can. And some days, you know, it's better than others, but he still struggles. So, that struck a nerve or a heart strain to me. And I want to help, I want to help, anything we can do as a council to help our small businesses, I want to try to do that.
How would you do things differently than those who currently serve on the council?
Well, the, the main thing right now I see is transparency. You know, other, like Charlestown here, for example, you know, they video their council meetings. And, and I, I know a lot of citizens don't pay no mind to it, but there are some that do. And they'd like to know, they can't really get up and go and go to a meeting. So, that would be one of the things I would really focus on is transparency. Hold, hold myself as well as the others accountable. I'm not saying they don't do that now. I'm just saying what I would do if, if I was to make it in there. You know, I would, I would encourage the citizens to really get involved and to understand and know what's going on. You know, make suggestions for the, how we can improve, you know? Ask the community, ask the residents of Clark County. What can we do as a, as a council to, to make it better for you? And, and I know that sounds cliche probably, but, but seriously, get, get some feedback from the people and ask really truly and, and have empathy and, and just want to do the right thing for them and to make it easier for them to know what's going on. But maybe put it out on the, not only on social media, but also, you know, get it a little bit better, maybe put it on the website of the Clark County government.
You would be one vote and one of seven members on the council. But would you be willing to commit to full transparency to your constituents? For example, will you support video streamed recorded meetings, including administrative meetings or any meetings outside of executive session? Making all the minutes, contracts and disbursements available on the county website? And ensure distribution of packets of documents that support upcoming topics to be voted on ahead of the meetings? So that constituents can engage and participate in decisions?
I support full transparency. We shouldn't have nothing to hide. You know, the, the community, the taxpayers have a right to know. And I'm, you know, through the years, my working and things, I've, I've always had the, the open door policy. And, and I think with the county, the council, it should be an open door. You know, there should be nothing hidden, nothing done behind closed doors rather. We should have full 100% transparency from day one.
Currently, public comments are constrained to three minutes each. And we're told that the council does not need to respond or answer questions, although some members volunteer to do so. Would you be in favor of increasing the three minute time limit and answering questions during public comment?
Well, I mean, we need to be within reason. You know, if, if you're just asking a question, then two to three minutes should be enough to ask the question. But it, it's, it's not enough probably for a dialogue between that person and the council. If the council knows the answer and they're, they're asked in front of the council, then I think, you know, you shouldn't have to just sit there like a robot and not answer questions. You know, I mean, have a dialogue, that, that's how you build trust. You know, open communication. Now, if somebody comes in and they're mad about something and they just kind of go off on everybody, then that, that, you know, I don't go for that. You know, you got to restrain yourself. You know, there's times I feel like going off on people, but, but I don't. You know, you have to restrain yourself. And, and do, and just in the end, you got, you want to do the right thing. And so, I'm okay with asking that three minute rule for asking questions. But then two, it depends on the question. So, it's kind of hard to answer that really. Because it, it, there's different scenarios. Like it's, uh, this Memphis, you know, this 183 acres, I think it was. The builders wanted to build all these homes. Lila, I know that ain't a real name, but that's her, you know, Facebook name, I don't want to tell her real name. But Lila, she done an awesome job communicating and things in the council. But some of the time that some of the people had, you know, when, when the little bell goes off, you're okay, you're done. You be in the middle of your question. That was a very hot topic. There was a whole lot of people that came there for that reason. So, I understand you can't be there all night, but at the same time, when it affects the community, affects individuals around that area, they ought to have a right to, a time to ask and, and to communicate back and forth with, you know, who they're directing their question to.
How are you going to ensure the public gets the opportunity to express their desires on a particular agenda item? How will you communicate with those you represent?
Well, it would, it'd probably have to be, unless they call me, if they got a concern or something like that, they, they'll have my cell. But, and an email address. But if they, if there's something that the county, the council is going to do, you know, social media is the only way. I missed the, the, the thing today, you know, the way to communicate. Messenger, you know, I'll be available in any way possible for my constituents to be able to get in touch with me if they got concerns. And we'll bring it up, you know, if they bring a concern, they can bet I'll, I'll talk to, talk to the council, we'll discuss.
You've had some time to study the roles and responsibilities of this position. Have you familiarized yourself with past minutes, budgets, additional appropriations, expenditures? And policies for the position you're running for? And did you attend any of the budget sessions this summer?
I have done a lot of research. I, I know the gist of the council positions, what that entails, how they set their budgets and things and the departments come together and request. That, that's kind of similar to what I'm used to in the, in the manufacturing world. Like, you know, I had to set, I had, I was over the plant, all the production, maintenance, engineering, things like that for, for many years. And of course, I reported to, that one time it was the plant manager. And then at the, then I ended up reporting to the VP of Operations. And so, it would be my responsibility to, to go and, and figure out the labor budgets, the maintenance budgets, the, the equipment budgets and different things of that sort. So, it's no different on, on this. You know, I know, I was told that there, I didn't get to attend the budget meetings. You know, let me get that out. I actually, I was at work and I couldn't get away. And, but I, if I get in, you know, if I get voted in, I will definitely make time and take vacation time or whatever I need to do to go to these meetings. But I am familiar with the budgets. I've, I've got, you know, I've received some information on the different department budgets. I know there was a $6 million, I think it was a deficit from what they were requesting to what the budget was going to be. You know, there's a miscommunication or something, or something down the line when you have had for $6 million more than what you, you know, the whole overall budget and this is what your, you know, your finances come in at, your budget is, and then you, you know, you're, you start off with a $6 million deficit. That's, that tells me, you know, I've, I've never seen that, but when I manage budgets, but, but when that happens, a lot of time it's, it's, the spending is out of control. And, you know, you're, you're, you're going to have a set budget, you need to stay within that budget. Now, I understand, you know, year over year, sometimes you give an increase. You know, it's a certain percent, but none of $6 million. And so, that needs to be looked at, or maybe they've already figured that one out. I don't know. I've not heard the latest. But I, you know, I will help with that. And I'm, I'm good with setting department budgets. I don't, I don't think that's my, necessarily my responsibility as a council. But I'll be glad to offer my services to the department heads to sit down with them and develop KPIs and, and things for their departments to be able to establish your budget and then go with that budget. You know, auditing, whatever needs to be, I can, I'm willing to work with the department heads to be able to figure that out.
Will you attend other county and/or local government meetings while in office to keep informed on planning, future growth, current issues and a general overall perspective on what other elected officials are doing that affect your decision-making process?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I got, you know, quite a bit of personal time, vacation time. I got a great job. And as a matter of fact, I got a great boss. So, I could take, you know, my personal time or vacation time or what's needed to do this job. But I would, one thing I really don't like and, and I ain't going to say it has changed because I don't know. It's just my opinion, everybody got their opinion. But most people, you know, that works in the professional world and things, most people get off at five o'clock, between 4:30 and five. When they're, they're, they set these meetings up at five o'clock or, or, you know, or earlier when the, when most of the people can't come. And so, I would encourage whoever it is that sets these meetings up. Yeah, I know it's, it's probably inconvenient if, if you're there at work and then they're to, you know, courthouse or the government building already done some things and then all of a sudden, you got to, you leave and then come back for a meeting, but, but, but you know, I, I would want the people involved. I would want them to be able to make, not have a meeting and nobody be able to show up.
All right, now the following questions are ones that we feel are important right now to voters in our community. Do you have any relatives, close friends or business partners serving in a government position, on a government board or as an elected official?
The only, I got my son who works, or he's on the city council in Charlestown. That's the only family member that I got is in politics. Or in, working in the government. I, I do got a family that's in law, unfortunately. You know, in Harrison County, Crawford County, in LMPD, Sheriff's Department down here in Clark County. So, and in Jeffersonville. So, you know, I'm surrounded by law enforcement. I got to walk right, be straight.
On those same lines, do you have any relatives, close friends or business partners in the building, development or real estate fields here in Clark County?
No, no, none.
Aside of funding the county budget, members of the council sit on various committees and boards. What is your view on industrial solar projects being placed on agricultural land in Clark County?
That, that's a, that's a hot topic. You know, I, I had my note paper and I just left it up. Well, what I was going to say was, I looked at how much land, agricultural land, that is owned by China. And it's like 384,000 acres of US agricultural land. I also looked at the next one that, that I think was the highest landowner, and that's Bill Gates. And you know, and you can't trust Bill Gates. You can't trust China. You know, I mean, that's why Trump, you know, he, he calls the virus, the coronavirus, the China virus. Now, what's, people out there right now is going to hear that and they're going to get mad at me. And I bet you they're going to be sending nasty texts or messages on my video, but you know, that, that's all right. I ain't, I ain't scared. My opinion is on this, taking agriculture land for solar, and I don't agree with that. I hate to see the land, agricultural land be used for solar or for any other purpose, even building houses on. I don't like to see that either. I think, you know, we need to take the land back from China. And, and, you know, not necessarily Bill Gates because he's an American, but, but, you know, he, here local, I'm going to get in trouble on this video. So, I think, you know, I, I consider, I got friends who's, who's farmers and things of that sort. And they're, they're older and they getting where they can't farm anymore. So, I, I understand why the farmers are saying that this, you know, this, this solar panel deal would, would bring them the income they need to, you know, to live, to survive. I get it. There is a place for solar, but it's just not in agriculture land like that, in my opinion. But you got to argument, it might take longer than two minutes. But, but it's an argument where, when, when do you infringe on somebody when you tell them they can't do something with their land? And so, that creates a whole nother issue. I, I believe in people need to have, they got rights. That if you own a piece of land, you should be able to do with what you want on it. But at the same time, you can't put something on it that's going to be a hazard to, to surrounding people, residents, communities, et cetera. I've done a lot of research on these solars and, and, you know, I got a, a good friend. I don't know if they still be my friends now or not. But, you know, they, they wanted to do this solar, industrial solar. And at first, when they asked me, I said, well, I think a person ought to be able to do with what they want on their land. And I said, but I did tell them right from the start. If it creates a hazard to humans, animals or the environment, then I'm not for it. And I said, but right now I don't know enough about it to make a decision. Since then, I've dug in and I, I, I can't tell you how much research I've, I've done, several hours. And the, the bad outweighs the good. And so, and I know I'm going to lose voters on this because I, I can't help it, I'm being honest. But I do think there needs to be an incentive, some help for the farmers. I think Micah Beckwith and, and Mike Braun is going to, if they get in, you know, Mike Beckwith is a, I think he'll be a champion for the agricultural landowners and things. And I, I think that they are working and helped to incentivize the farmers. And if a farmer can't farm his land anymore, then I think there ought to be incentives. First of all, I think the, the farmer do not have to pay, they shouldn't have to pay the taxes on the property. I, I, that, I'm a firm believer in it. And anybody 65 and over that's retired and, and done paid their dues, they should not have to pay property taxes. But I, I can't solve that as a council. If I run for president, I, I could do it with the strike of a pin. But I do think that the farmers need to be paid. And they need to maybe incentivize other people to come in and farm their land, younger generations to come in. We need the crops. And if we give up all of our land to China and Bill Gates and we give all of our land up to these solars, where are we going to farm our crops? What are we going to eat? We can't trust the food and things that comes in from China. Now, now I ain't knocking old Chinese people here in the United States, let me get that out there. And I all, I welcome everybody that comes into the United States that wants to live here and live here legally. You know, come in legally. I'm good with that. But I ain't good a foreign entity coming in and owning the United States and controlling what we eat. Anyway, I hope I answered your question. It's kind of long-winded, but, but I'm, I'm against solar farming or industrial solar on farmland. And, but I do think we need to help the farmers.
Along those same lines, what is your view on the current Clark County Comprehensive Plan and developing and rezoning agricultural land here in Clark County? How can we balance development with maintaining agricultural land responsibly?
Right now, you know, we, well, the prime example again is that Memphis project about the house. There's a lot of apartments coming up here in Charlestown. You know, all that, the water's got to come from somewhere and, and the waste has to go somewhere. The, 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 right now, I think it's on Salem Noble, there, there's a big project going on there with building a school. And, and I ride those roads and I'm telling you, you know, somebody comes over just a little bit, you're going to get hit, hit head on. So, I don't know how that's going to work with the buses and the automobiles and things. I ain't saying don't build a school. I'm just saying the road ain't that. We got a lot of infrastructure that need to be built. 62 is a mess. I know they're working over there now on it, so I'm hoping some of their projects is, is going to be good for that. But the businesses is coming in faster than they can do the infrastructure. So, we, at some point, we're going to have to stop and say, okay, we got to build these roads. We got to fix these, you know, these sewers and, and utilities and things to try to make, you know, try to help it, help build our infrastructure. Otherwise, I mean, right now going through Sellersburg in the mornings, I go through the rally and especially on school days and it is packed. And, and it, we're, it used to take, you know, 25 minutes to get to work, now it takes almost an hour. So, we got a lot of work to do. And I, I looked into the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. There are some, you know, infrastructure things that's going to go on. It looks like, is it adequate? I'd have to get some more studies done or engineering involved to, to look at it and to tell me, you know, discuss it and look at it. But we knew, we got to build our infrastructure before we build a bunch more houses.
River Ridge Development Authority is a quasi-governmental body who is able to bring companies into the area and conduct business without citizen input or knowledge until contracts are already signed. As an urban enterprise zone and TIF district, they also retain generated tax income and revenue that does not go back into the community like a standard district. Do you believe there should be more continuity between River Ridge Development Authority and Clark County Government? And will you attend River Ridge Board meetings, give input and seek property tax revenue from River Ridge to fund needed infrastructure improvements?
That's a pretty long question, but yes. I think that, I know they got a committee on the River Ridge project over there. I don't know if any actual citizens or residents are involved in it. It's, I think it's primarily elected officials and the, and then the board that runs the, you know, that area. You know, I, I tell you, I think, you know, there's, there ought to be a, a public notice, not in the newspaper in that little bitty fine print. You know, how you, they, they, they put in an, an official notice in a newspaper, they're going to do something. But they're putting such a little bitty fine print and it's hid way in the back of the newspaper where nobody sees it. So, I think it ought to be publicized. This business is wanting to come in and then let's talk about it and have a, have a, maybe a, a town hall meeting or something to discuss the pros and cons. I do believe we need to incentivize businesses to come in the area, you know, good businesses that we consider that's profitable and that's, you know, that adds value to our, to our community, to our county. You know, we, we do have an income tax revenue already from the River Ridge. In, in '23, it was 7.8 million. And, and then in '24, we're projected to get right at 9.6 or maybe 9.7. So, and that's, that's a, you know, a 1.8 million increase in just a year. So, it's growing, it's adding, and I want to thank, well, I got in this video, Brian Liff, you know, I hope you don't mind me telling his name on here, but he's been very good to work with. You know, when I, when I've done some of this research, you got information and things, he's been very helpful in sending me a lot of this data. Some, some of this data I'm not privy to. I get, yeah, I can't just go out there and just pull it up. I ain't saying they hide it, I didn't say that. I'm just saying that, that some of it, I don't know where to get it from. So, so Brian has been very helpful. But I am all for transparency there and let's, let's just, let's look and see the companies that come in, the tax abagements and things they have. You know, I, I do agree with a certain amount, but they still need to pay. You know, you got a eight or $10 million or $150 million business over there. Surely you can pay some property taxes that, that we're, and, and I, and what I see there, and, and I ain't saying that anybody's doing this deliberately, I, I think it's just by design. They, they, you know, when the businesses come in and they get these tax breaks, then the burden of taxes is put on the residents. Because all of our property values go up. And I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm all for our property value going up. I mean, you know, if we tried to sell, then, I mean, we're in that better shape. But we shouldn't have to pay taxes like you. You lower the, the percent of, you know, the assessed value if we need to. Or Indiana, you know, Mike Braun, you know, if he's watching this, you know, he, he's probably going to win. I would say he's going to win. You know, him and Micah Beckwith, I think compliment one another. And, and so, if, if the people on here can't figure it out by now, you know, I'm voting for Mike Braun and Micah Beckwith. But I, I think But I I think that, uh, Micah Beckwith is gonna fight to help us on our property taxes. In conversations, he he's even puts things out on Facebook, you know, that about him and and, uh, soon to be Governor Braun. Uh, they're gonna have, you know, they're gonna have, they're they're gonna do things to help our property taxes. So, so my fight in there probably won't be much of a fight, if if long as I got them on, you know, they're gonna be doing it. And and so it'll it'll probably just trickle down.
As a council member, you will not be a full-time employee of the county, but you will be offered a full medical insurance benefit. Some constituents are okay with paying for this benefit to let, or I'm sorry, some constituents are not okay with paying for this benefit to less than full-time employees, and others are okay with it. What is your position on this topic, and will you be taking county insurance?
Where I work at right now, I have good insurance. I don't really need any more. Um, I know some companies, if you provided the insurance somewhere, you're gonna have to take care versus. But but this position is is just part-time. Uh, the pay is not all that. I'm not in this for the pay. Uh, I mean, the pay is gonna help offset some time and gas and things like that. It ain't nothing to write home and tell mom about. Uh, that's not why I'm getting in this. Uh, I'm not getting in this for insurance. Um, you know, I I don't plan on taking the the county insurance. As far as I'm concerned, that money, what they would pay that, it it maybe go get somebody on their taxes. You know, I I don't, whatever they wanna do. But I don't, I don't, uh, I don't plan on taking any insurance. And I'm not opposed, though. Let me let me make it clear. If if somebody, you know, a lot of the the folks that are older and things that gets in the, on the council and things, if if they don't work a full-time job somewhere and have any medical insurance, and they get on at the council, I'm okay with them having insurance. Uh, I I don't wanna, I wouldn't wanna close that option off. And later on, you know, I don't, I ain't decided that if I make it to this one, I may not wanna run again. Or or I may. I really don't know, but but the older I get, you know, if it ever comes to an opportunity or or or, uh, you know, something where I have to have insurance, then then I would, I would want it to be there to be able to have. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna take it 'cause I don't need it at this time.
The current landfill is nearing capacity with a series of expansions over decades. Residents complain of foul odors, traffic, wastewater concerns, a lack of accountability and oversight, and the lack of planning for rapid growth, especially River Ridge in Clark County. Have you looked at plans and funds for closure and post-closure, and what are your thoughts on solutions for handling landfill needs?
I have been out there, uh, and talked about about the landfill. Uh, I toured the landfill. And it it's, you know, my brother, my twin brother, uh, owns Blevins Sanitation. Uh, him and his crews are out there every day, several times a day. Uh, he and I discussed it, uh, me and Bob and and my brother discussed it. Um, looking at at some of the issues he that, um, you know, my brother, Donnie, he, when he takes his trucks in and out of there, I mean, it is bad. It it is, it's just, it's in bad shape out there. It needs a lot of attention. Uh, we do need to expand it, but there needs to be, I'd have to, uh, get the right people involved that knows more than I do about what we could do to contain the smell. Uh, to to, I know they, I've seen them dig huge, humongous holes and and push dirt, you know, put the garbage in it and put dirt over top of it. Um, how they eliminate a lot of the waste. I don't know what the fix is, you know, just off the top of my head, being honest. Uh, but I'd get the right people involved that does know the fix. And then try to, I think it, you know, that's a huge part. I I would hold Floyd County and Clark County accountable to helping to fix that problem. Uh, you know, it ain't just on the burden of Clark County. And the Clark County Council or Commissioners, it's on Floyd as well. So, in collaboration with Floyd County, I would try to work together and try to figure out a solution. And then have the right, like, it goes back again, you know, I know it all, but you don't know who does. I would surround myself with a team that knows how to fix it.
Clark County has a history of contract EMS services. Due to the current EMS scandals, we have another temporary EMS contract in place. The EMS Committee has been discussing a county-based municipal and/or fire-based solution to our EMS deficits for years. What is your position on continuing EMS contracts versus transitioning to a government-run solution?
Yeah. My personal opinion. Uh, I think we need a county-run EMS. Uh, I don't think we need to contract it now. Um, I think there needs to be oversight and and management from, uh, Clark County Government. Uh, whether it be the councils, Commissioners, or both, or we we hire somebody uh, that has that knowledge and capacity to be able to, uh, run it. Um, and then and then audits and checks and balances to make sure everything's, you know, kosher. Um, I do think that our our county is so big that if 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 somebody stationed in, uh, like down at Utica, where where New Chapel was, and and they're needed way out here in New Wash or or out in Borden or or Henryville, then it it doesn't, uh, it takes too long for them to get there. I've been in situations and called nine-one-one and needed an ambulance and and be patient. When are they gonna get here? When are they gonna get here? And it it just seemed like, like twenty minutes later, and then finally here, somebody could roll them in. But but I understand, you know, over the last few years or so, they've kind of been in a situation, um, that wasn't a good situation. Uh, but I think if we have adequate staffing, adequate training, and 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 position, uh, you know, the fire-based EMSs, I I support that. Uh, but but I I wouldn't expect a fireman, uh, to to jump in an ambulance and and go take care of a, somebody that that's having a heart attack or or some other kind of problem. You know, a fireman is is trained to to fight fires and and to save and and, uh, they are, uh, CPR and things of that sort, and I don't, I don't know how much training they do get. Uh, uh, but I do know that that I appreciate the firemen very much and what they do. And, but I think if we had EMTs with the fireman, then then I I would, I would definitely support that and and, you know, help the fire departments and the N EMS. I I know it's kind of sound long, long-winded, but I'm all for county-based EMS.
Property taxes seem to be increasing for most property owners in Clark County significantly for many. Some council members allege that they have no control over property taxes. What is your view on the role that council members can play in property taxes, and will you have the power to make a difference in this area?
As far as having the power, I don't know. Uh, in all honesty, uh, am I gonna try? You better believe it. Um, I think as far as, uh, the the council responsibility, we have a responsibility to manage the budget. Set a budget. And then don't just be ready, and I'm not, let me make this clear, I'm sorry. I don't wanna assinu- I'm not assinuating that the current council is 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 just approving everything. I I I ain't even talking about them. I'm talking about me, what I would do if I get in, and I will help manage the budget. You know, cut out any waste whatsoever. And then to help manage your budget, may, it's one of them, I heard one of them say a while back, well, if we don't spend it, then we're gonna lose it by the state. Well, we need to change it. We need to push back. And and but but I'm sure that if we don't spend it here, we can use it over here. You know, uh, for the EMS and things, or property taxes and things. Uh, you know, um, a meeting with Sean Saturday. He mentioned something about, uh, the heart, you know, fifteen to seventeen million dollars you set. You know, in the auditor's office, uh, I can't remember now the number off the top of my head, but he's sitting on a lot of money. Uh, i- it's a fund that it it just, the money just kind of gets in, and then there ain't no, you just can't get, you just can't, okay for this or that, because it was dedicated for something else, but it ain't being used. Um, that's, I heard that in one of the meetings. But, um, we need to do our best as a county council, uh, council to cut costs, to eliminate waste, and to try to help push money back to give the citizens, the residents of Clark County, uh, a a tax break. Uh, I don't know about you, but I hate paying high gas prices. I hate paying high food prices. I hate paying high property taxes. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. And so, anything we can do as a council, and these folks out here elect uh, officials to get in and work and do for them. Not getting in and do crazy things i- if somebody wants to, you know, do something crazy, but but the taxpayers elect us in office to be a voice for the taxpayer. And to to, you know, there was a war fought a long time ago. The the, what do they call it, um, taxation without representation, uh, representation? Uh, well, I feel like that again. You know, we're we're being too, we'd we'd pay taxes on everything. And it keeps going up and up and up. When does it quit? You know, one of my trips, I don't, I hate, I don't mean to take up too much time, but one of my trips, uh, I talked to some folks, you know, in another country. And they said they pay like eighty percent, ninety percent, between eighty and ninety percent. And I I said, how do you make it? And they they begin to tell me, um, you know, the government had tight ropes on everybody. Uh, it made me appreciate America when I got back over here. There's no place like home. Uh, but but unfortunately, we got some people in there that that's screwing us up right now. Um, I think, uh, I don't know, it's a long answer to the question. But but I think we need to, uh, we need to help the citizens and and give the money back. You know, I'm all for, if you, they ain't figured it out by now, they ain't gonna do, you know, I'm really for the people. I've I've been told not to do this interview. I I I'm getting ridiculed a little something on it. I I'm just gonna put it out there. Uh, let let me tell you folks something. And and I'm sorry if you got any questions, but I I'm just gonna tell you, um, I'm just gonna go ahead and just talk. Um, I'm really for the citizens of Clark County. I'm not a, as you heard in the other video, I'm not a politician. I'm not polished whatsoever. Uh, I'm I'm a, I'm a straight matter of fact. I'll tell you my opinion. You may not like it, but I'll tell you. Uh, if you don't wanna listen, that's okay. You know, I respect that. Uh, but my opinion is, the the Clark County residents have been taken advantage of. Uh, you know, of course, the one that done that is is is, he's gonna be behind bars, and that's exactly where he needs to be. There's others that that may have been involved in it. I don't know. I said, but if they have, then they need to be right there beside it. Um, but I do know there are some good Republicans that's in office right now that that people have taken a a brush stroke and just said, well, Jamie, no, he's he's a Republican. All the Republicans are corrupt. That's not true. You know, I've had the 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 privilege over the last several months. You know, when I first started this, back in the spring, you know, I come out, I probably like come out like a bull in a china shop. But but since then, you know, I I've learned and 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 worked with certain individuals, and I realized not everybody in there is corrupt. Uh, regardless of what some of the other folks on the other side are saying. Um, we, you know, everybody's just like me saying, you know, Kamala, you know, she she's bad, she's corrupt. And so now all the Democrats are corrupt. You know, uh, everybody knows i- it's it's got any, you know, uh, 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 and understanding of how things are here in the country, you know, uh, I I'm I'm really free speaking here, so I hope I don't get in trouble. But in two thousand sixteen, you know, and 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 up between two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty, our gas prices were down. Our borders were being secured. Our, uh, uh, food prices was within reason. I'd go to and fill up a tank of gas in my truck, uh, fifty, between fifty and sixty dollars. Now it's, it's over a hundred. Uh, and then, uh, when when all of a sudden now, you know, Biden and 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 Kamala gets in there, and then all of a sudden now, you know, our inflation's so high, yeah, and along with these taxes and and everything else that we're paying and high-priced foods and stuff, uh, when does, when do we get a break? Folks, it's important. It's not, there's good Democrat people, there's good Republican people. When you get the ones in there that's doing a bad job, that ain't because of Democrat, and that ain't because of Republican. That's just a bad person doing a bad thing. So, I'm a hundred percent confident. I can work with Democrats, I can work with Republicans, I can work with anybody. As long as they're doing the right thing. And and not my opinion of what the right thing is, but doing the right thing and helping the 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 Clark County citizens. And and as far as that go across the country. At some point, you know, I've heard people say, man, I, you know, I wasn't gonna go there really, but but, uh, you know, if anybody called me my election, I don't know, but I wouldn't say it anyways. Um, you know, I got family members. They said, oh, I'm not gonna vote for Trump. I don't like Trump. Well, I don't like paying high prices. I don't like, you know, Kamala had, and they're saying Kamala's campaign, it ain't Trump's, it's mine. But but I, you know, I'm I want you, I wanna be open, fully open with you guys, 'cause what you see is what you get. And and if you don't wanna vote me in, then don't vote me in. But but one thing for sure, if you vote me in, I will be a voice for you. And I'll do the right thing for you. But we gotta get this country back on track. And more important than my campaign is folks, all the, I encourage you, all the Republicans, all the Democrats, all the 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 swing voters, y- all of you out there, evaluate our situation in this country from a, from a national standpoint and to a local economy standpoint. And let's do what's best for America. Let's do what's best for Clark County. I got in this 'cause I wanna help my family. I wanna help you and your family. Anybody that knows me personally knows that I love God. I love my family. And I love this country. And in that order. I love you. And I will fight for you. You give me an opportunity. You'd be glad you did.
One last thing, how can voters learn more about you, support your campaign, and get in touch with you?
Facebook and Messenger is probably the best way. I do have an email address, it's R E V dot Blevins at Gmail dot com. My phone number is eight one two nine one four two eight eight seven.
Okay. It's been a pleasure, Ron, as always. Thank you so much for interviewing with us.
Thank you, and God bless you all.